Can everyone please take your seats? We're about to get started, please. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, May the ninth, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali. Councilmember Allen.
President.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Here.
Councilmember Graham. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Please join me, everyone, and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk?
We are at proclamations.
We have three proclamations tonight, but before we go into the proclamations, on behalf of myself and this Peoria City Council, I'd like to offer this tribute to the late Mayor Richard Carver. Tonight, we send our heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of former Mayor Richard E. Carver, who passed away on Friday, May the fifth. His wife Judith preceded him in death in January of this year. Our thoughts go out to their children Catherine, Stephen, Cynthia, and Susan, and their many grandchildren. Richard Carver enjoyed an illustrious career, as has been repeated in multiple news stories in the days since his passing. He made homes in Iowa, Virginia, Washington DC, and Florida. In addition to holding the rank of Lieutenant Colonel of the US Air Force, some of Richard Carver's positions include President of Carver Lumber Company, Director of the Economic Development Council for the Peoria Area, and the Peoria Area Chamber of Commerce, and positions in the federal government. He held leadership roles in multiple organizations as President of the United States Conference of Mayors, President of the National Conference of Republican Mayors, Vice President of the Illinois Municipal League, and Director of the Illinois State Chamber of Commerce. A graduate of Bradley University with a degree in Business Administration, he served his alma mater as a member of the Associate Board of Trustees and the National Council Advisors to the College of Business Administration. He received the Distinguished Alumnus Award in 1983. Although Mayor Carver held several highly visible positions, he was best known for his time in Peoria and his many accomplishments. He first served as Alderman from 1969, and then as Mayor from 1973 to 1984. Last week, the surviving members of the 1973 City Council held their 50th reunion, and in between sharing stories and catching up, Lester Bergston, Bruce Brown, and James Bateman reminisced on their many accomplishments. During his time as Mayor, Carver was noted as a gifted consensus builder. When asked to reflect on major successes in his time as Mayor, there was one project he would bring up first: moving the University of Illinois College of Medicine at Peoria from Gale Avenue, just east of I-74, to where it is today. He felt that this was not only an example of external support and collaboration, but part of a pattern of later completed projects. Some of the most visible of those projects include the refurbishing of our council chambers, the creation of a new police station, public works facility, central fire station, fire training academy, and the Peoria Civic Center, where the arena bears his name. And there were other accomplishments, less visible but nonetheless important, that made an impact on the running of the city, including establishing one of the first committees for equal employment in the country, overseeing the creation of a program where all commissioned fire and police personnel achieved entry-level emergency medical technology certificates, and the creation of a public-private study for cost control to ensure that the money within the city government was spent responsibly. The latter of these achievements would lead to the next step in his career. On October 16, 1984, in this room, Mayor Carver resigned as Mayor to take the position of Assistant Secretary of the US Air Force in Financial Management. In his departing comments, he said, "I would like to wish you all the best of success because you will be serving that political body that is singularly the most important in all of our lives, the home in which we live." In a tribute to Richard Carver in December of 1984, it was noted that Richard Carver has left an indelible imprint on the people and the profile of Peoria. And on December 18, 1984, the City Council passed a joint resolution by the Board of Commissioners of the Peoria Civic Center Authority and the City Council to rename the Peoria Civic Center Arena "The Richard E. Carver Arena." And in 1988, the man known as President Reagan's favorite mayor, left his sub-cabinet in the Reagan administration to become the President of US Operations for ZG Industries, a major German manufacturing based in Friedrichshafen, Germany, Peoria's sister city, proving that former Mayor Carver could travel the world, but Peoria was never far from his heart. Rest well, Mayor Carver, and thank you for your contributions to our city. I want to thank Ms. Stacy Peterson, our Strategic Communications Manager, for her excellent penmanship and research skills in putting that tribute together. Thank you, Stacy. We have three proclamations. The first is National Public Works Week. I'd like to ask Director Rick Powers to come forward. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Peoria. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Peoria to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and this year's theme is Connecting the World. Now therefore I, Reid Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby proclaim May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in Peoria, Illinois.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. If there's ever a time of year where I want to say a lot, but I never do, as you know, because, again, I took the advice of a president dead long ago, but Theodore Roosevelt said, and I say in my own recollegial way, surround yourself with brilliance and get out of the way. And I'm still working on that, but I've got a pretty brilliant team, as you already know. We, this year, in spite of COVID, with the bipartisan infrastructure bill, we are facing, I don't even know if you'd say once in a generation, probably multiple generations, where we have seen an investment in infrastructure like we haven't seen before. And we are going after money that, quite frankly, if we get, may overwhelm us because of the staff we have, which speaks to the point of one of the things within the proclamation of the partnerships that really make up a public works team, which, when you say engineers and/or firms, be it civilian or within government, as you know, most of our engineering is contract employees and consultants. And we move, in fact, this year, we'll be moving over north of $70 million into the economy and into the infrastructure of Peoria with their help and a true partnership and the handshake that we have with them. And I think sometimes we forget that, that just how vital we are to the economy outside of where we are and what we do with our own employees, and just how critical that handshake is that we have with that community and what they're doing. And I've actually heard a few things about a few projects we have going, like Glenn. The list could go on and on, and there's some major accomplishments, Madam Mayor, you'll be talking about, I'm sure, in an upcoming speech. But it's just a good day to be a director, when you hear normally a very quiet, unassuming group of people that takes care of just about everything you see or don't see between every telephone pole that you drive over, that keeps you illuminated, that keeps your signs from the waterfront, you're even looking at the harbor master in Peoria. That's just how broad of a sense of responsibility that we carry, and we carry it, I think, hopefully, in a way that you're proud of us. I know I'm super proud of my team. I'm proud to be in Peoria and now at Peoria, and to serve you. As you know, the thunder never travels without the lightning. He's standing back here waiting to talk and wants to tell you about a few things we have coming up, again, because we've had a couple of successes and another opportunity for you to come see us soon. So with that, if I could, I'd like to give the floor to Cy Maroon, our Deputy Director of Operations, which is, quite frankly, most of the face you see. About 80% of our staff is in operations, on top of the money that we move through to the economy in our engineering division. So thank you very much for the proclamation.
And if I could let Cy speak, I'd appreciate it. Absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for recognizing us one more time, this annual event that we have in Public Works, is National Public Works Week. You've been very gracious in recognizing what we do and providing us with a proclamation that speaks loudly in what we do and who we are and why we do what we do. If you take away nothing this evening outside of what Director Powers and myself are saying, what we want you to go away with is just knowing and have the confidence to know that public works is doing everything we can within our powers and within our ability to meet the needs of this community. We know that's number one, and that's our mission, and we will continue to work at that. We will continue to move forward in connecting the world, but right now, we're going to connect the city of Peoria. So we want to thank you very much for that. A couple of things I wanted to mention that's coming up. Of course, this coming Saturday, we're having our third, which has been very successful, mulch giveaway. And we'll be doing that this Saturday from eight to one, out at Drew's Lane at Public Works. And we've met a lot of needs. We've had well over 400 vehicles come through our first two operations, so we're doing this one more time, believing we will be very successful. The final item for tonight is our National Public Works Week. Open House is coming on May 18. It's open to the public. It's from four to seven. We will provide fun for the kids. We will have lots of information for the adults that are very interested in seeing what we do and how we do it. So that will be May 18. It's a Thursday night at Public Works. Lots of fun activities, so we encourage any and all to participate. So thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do. We appreciate you all. Thank you. Our next proclamation recognizes National Salvation Army Week, and we have Major Heath Sales and Craig Young joining us. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Whereas the Salvation Army was founded in 1865 by William and Catherine Booth as a Christian denominational church, an international charitable organization with the mission of advocating for families and bridging communities. And whereas the Salvation Army has been present in Peoria for 137 years and operates a community center, two homeless shelters, two food pantries, a childcare center, and a chapel that serves more than 15,000 people each year. Whereas through the centers, through those centers, and in conjunction with the Department of Family and Support Services, the Salvation Army operates social service programs aimed at helping those in need of homeless shelters, food pantries, weekly sack lunches, emergency assistance for rent, utilities, spiritual needs, along with the emergency disaster relief. And whereas Pathway of Hope is a program that provides individualized services to families with children to break the cycle of poverty, this gives people in our community a safe place to land and to reestablish their purpose. In addition, these programs educate children on continuing their education and provide essential life skills for a brighter tomorrow. Whereas the Salvation Army also provides emergency disaster services to support city and county emergency service teams by providing mobile feeding programs, spiritual counseling, temporary shelter, and emergency communications. Whereas National Salvation Army Week was first declared in 1954 to remind the public of the valuable services offered by the Salvation Army and to educate them on the ways that they can help. Now therefore I, Reid Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 15 through 21 as National Salvation Army Week in Peoria. Major?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. It is my privilege to be the faithful courier of the generosity and benevolence of our community partners, individual donors who recognize that the Salvation Army plays a significant role. And as you heard here in that proclamation for nearly 140 years, we are committed to standing in the gap for families and individuals who, at different levels, cry out for help. Some of that may be because they're homeless. Some of that may be because they need a safe place for their children to go after school, or for quality education for the preschoolers, and maybe for a veteran who has faithfully fought for our country, who needs assistance as they transition back into normal life. The Salvation Army stands in the gap to make sure that we hear that call for help, and we are so thankful that the recognition today understands that the Salvation Army plays an important role here in Peoria for so many of our neighbors in need, and we're excited that we get to do that here, again, for nearly 140 years. It is my goal that one day, we can stand here and say, "The work has been finished." But it is our birthright that we continue to stand in the gap for those who need assistance from the Salvation Army.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I don't work for the Salvation Army. I'm a volunteer. I'm a member of our advisory board and have been for most of my adult life. And I just want to thank you for the recognition. The Salvation Army does not get recognized that often because they don't seek it out. The mission of the Army is to serve those in need in the name of Christ without discrimination, period. And they do that every single day, very selflessly, the officers and the staff, and they do it very quietly, and quite frankly, they've done it without cease for the entire 137 years they've been here. And the basic needs they serve are not real jazzy, not real exciting, but as Major noted, we long for the day when those services aren't needed, but we all know, they always will be, to some degree. And the Salvation Army's always been there to meet those needs, no matter what, and they always will be. So I'm proud to be involved with them, and I really, really, on behalf of the community, appreciate the recognition you've given the Salvation Army here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your leadership and service. Our final proclamation recognizes the 50th anniversary of the Peoria Rugby Football Team. We have Charlie Parrott, who is President of the Peoria Rugby Football Foundation, and Dakota Hefner, who is President of the Peoria Rugby Football Club. Thank you for joining us, gentlemen. Whereas the Peoria Rugby Football Club, the first rugby club established in Peoria, Illinois, is celebrating its 50th anniversary. And whereas the club was initially named the Peoria Bradley Rugby Club, but officially became the Peoria Rugby Football Club when it later incorporated as a nonprofit. The club initially practiced at Lower Bradley Park, where the baseball diamond is located, and later played at Detweiler Park. Whereas the Peoria Rugby Football Club has provided volunteer services for many Peoria social service organizations throughout the past 50 years. And whereas the Peoria Rugby Football Club has also supported high school rugby teams throughout central Illinois. Whereas the Peoria Rugby Football Club provides a diverse and inclusive environment for all who wish to play rugby, recently, they established the first women's rugby team in Peoria, the Peoria Bootleggers Women's Rugby Club. And whereas the Peoria Rugby Football Club plays home games in Peoria, in addition to traveling throughout the Midwest to play other teams in tournaments. Now therefore I, Reid Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the 50th anniversary of the Peoria Rugby Football Club in Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for this honor. I'm here representing the Peoria Rugby Football Foundation and also the more senior former players from Peoria Club. I coached, played, and actually Dakota here was one of my high school players that is now the president of the current side. The foundation was formed in 2013, as we came to realize that more support was needed for the club. And as you know, organizations don't last for 50 years without a lot of work, a lot of organization, a lot of perseverance on the members themselves. And we've seen that throughout our 50-year history, through the downturns in Peoria's economic situation. We've had many up and down years through those times, very good years, and we are proud to have been a part of Peoria for 50 years. The old vaudeville saying or question, "Will it play in Peoria?" Well, we're here to tell you, it will. And the foundation is dedicated to helping to ensure that it will continue for another 50 years. And I'll turn it over to Dakota, let him give his two cents.
Well, I don't have a whole lot to say, not really one for big speeches, but it's pretty awesome to be here with you guys today. Really appreciate you guys recognizing us for being around for 50 years. It's a long time. I've been part of the club for maybe seven or eight years now, and just the ins and outs and going through everything to keep the club together for that period of time, it's, you know, it's a lot. So for myself, all the guys in the club now, and everybody in the past that got us to this point, you know, this is for all of them, and I want to say a big thank you to them and also to you guys. So thank you very much.
Congratulations on 50 long years. That's pretty phenomenal.
Come out and watch us. We're at Catholic Charities, and usually every weekend in the spring and the fall. We've got the Peoria Bootleggers Women's Team now going that's fun to watch as well, so come on down.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Regenbach?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on April 25, 2023, and the minutes of the special city council meeting held on May 2, 2023, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the town portion of the agenda. 23-159 is a request from the town officials to approve the April 2023 actual expenditures and to approve the May 2023 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Trustee Graham?
Yes, Mayor Ali, I move to approve the expenditures for April and May as outlined.
Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Seer. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-172 is an appointment by Supervisor Leary to the Decennial Committee on Local Government Efficiency with a request to concur of Yvonne Fleming and Irene Lewis Wimbley.
Trustee Graham?
Madam Chair, at the request of our township attorney, I ask that this item be deferred for two weeks.
Seconded by Trustee Regenbach. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the city portion of the agenda. We're at consent. 23-160 is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the Declaration of Local State of Emergency. state of emergency. 23-161 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Human Resources with a request to authorize the payment of workers' compensation judgment in the amount of $120,147.55 to a former police officer injured on October 28th, 2016, and October 7th, 2020. 23-162 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Human Resources with a request to authorize the payment of a worker's compensation judgment in the amount of $113,553.93 to a public works maintenance worker injured on August 15th, 2018. 23-163 is a communication with a request to approve a settlement of the litigation matter of Joynell Strong Douglas versus City of Peoria et al., 20-11, 20-L-0018 in the amount of $130,000. 23-164 is a communication with a request to approve existing liability coverage with Chubb Insurance Company and Berkeley Insurance through Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services at a one-year cost of $616,983, and to add cyber liability coverage with Cram and Forster Insurance at a cost of $42,047, and crime coverage with Hanover Insurance at a cost of $2,778. 23-165 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Construction Commission with a request to concur of Adam Maurer. 23-166 is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees with a request to concur of Andre M. Leverett. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 23-160, please.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that number, 23?
23-160.
Okay, alrighty. Any other items? Can I get a motion to approve moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Seer, to approve the remaining items? Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-160 is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'd like to ask our assistant city manager if there is a plan to end the state of emergency in the city concurrent with the governor's.
That would be Corporation Council?
Yes, I will. I will turn it over to Corporation Council. Hayes, answer that question.
Thank you. The document before you that the mayor has executed would extend the emergency only till May 11th, when the governor has indicated that the state emergency and the disaster declaration for the state of Illinois will terminate. So we have planned to have our declaration last only until that underlying state measure lapses, and there's no plan to extend it further. I will tell you that staff has been working with all of our boards and commissions to make them aware that the remote meeting option, which was a primary reason that we were extending the state of emergency for the city, will no longer be available to them after the 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corporation Council, and thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Seer? Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. 23-167 is a communication with a request to approve the funding recommendations from the Community Development Block Grant Public Services Commission for the Nonprofit Capital Program.
Assistant Madam Manager?
Yes, I have here our Director of Community Development, Joe Doolan, able to speak to this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Assistant City Manager, Council. The item in front of you tonight is for approval of the Community Development Block Grant, the recommendation from the Community Development Block Grant Public Service Commission for recommendation of funding in our nonprofit capital program. If if council recalls, back in January of 2022, the City of Peoria created a nonprofit capital program. Essentially, what we wanted to do is with the American Rescue Plan money that the city received, we saw some programs created specifically for businesses. We wanted to ensure to create some business, some programs as well for our nonprofit community. And while they all provide excellent services to our community, those services, once they're done, are kind of can have ongoing expenses. So we wanted to create a lasting program that would improve the capital facilities of a lot of locations around the City of Peoria, so there'd be a lasting impact on our residents. That process for approval, after the applications were submitted, then go to the CBG Public Service Commission for scoring. The recommendations that they and scoring that they come to is in front of you. They recommended funding six organizations, Heartland Health Services, Peoria Friendship House, PCCO, East Bluff Community Center, the Minority Business Development Center, and George Washington Carver Center. So that would be the request in front of you for $448,000. I do want to kind of commend our grant staff. I think this is an incredibly valuable program for our nonprofit community to hopefully take this money and make it last in our community for years to come by making actual investments in their buildings, fix roofs, fix HVAC systems, things like that, so it's not just a one and done type of thing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone would have.
Any questions for Director Doolan? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Doolan, can you talk about any feedback that those who weren't awarded funding they may get, just so that way they can possibly have a stronger application next time?
Yes. And we do provide that to the people who don't get funding. I think the main thing, if you look at all the organizations that applied this year, a large majority of those that didn't get funded requested vans. And and yes, while the the need for transportation is important in our community, I think what the commission was looking for were more kind of physical capital expenses related to buildings. Sometimes a van is a capital purchase, but then there's a lot of ongoing maintenance and a lot of ongoing costs. And just based on the the recommendations that you see what got approved and what didn't get approved, that was something the commission looked at. But but for the for the most part, I think that it was a very close scoring, and that was kind of the the main distinction between a lot of the organizations that got funded and didn't.
Thank you for the explanation, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve request?
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Director Doolan, if, first of all, I very much like this program. It's twinned, I guess, with our capital program for small businesses. And so I'm I'm in favor. I am interested, however, in if we have a recipient this year, if we go next year again, are they still in the mix or are they disqualified next year?
So this year, we gave an additional point to those that did not receive funding last year. So what we will do for if we have the program again next year, we will bring the actual criteria back to council like we did in the past of the scoring criteria. And if it's the direction of council, we can give additional points if you weren't previously funded. But if you look at the scoring matrix as provided, it was pretty close where a point can make a big difference. And I believe only two of the organizations that were funded this year were funded in the previous year, and the other four were new recipients.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We have a motion and a second on the floor. No other questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-168 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request for the following. A, to adopt an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate from the Downtown Development Corporation of Peoria for the development of parking facilities on Southwest Washington Street. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2023 revised annual budget relating to the Warehouse District Tax Increment Financing Fund to use fund balance for the purchase of property on Southwest Washington Street in the amount of $250,000. And this item B requires two-thirds vote of the corporate authorities present.
Madam Assistant Manager and Corporation Council?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I just want to update the council on this item. We are looking at a future development that can bring about 175 new residential units into that area on the corner of Southwest Washington. The acquisition of this property will allow us to have the ability to control the site and also to future develop that site for parking needs for not just that particular project, but also hopefully additional parking. As you know, we have parking that's been identified that could be the new Depot Street. But as we continue to see the interest in the Warehouse District for residential parking, we're going to continue to see the need to acquire additional parking in that area. So this is the first step in making sure that occurs.
Councilmember Euler?
To approve item A.
Is there a seconded by Councilmember Seer? Any discussion? Cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Euler?
Move to approve item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-169 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Greater Peoria Mass Transit District Board of Trustees with a request to concur of Andre Allen.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Corporation Council, Hayes, just a point of clarification. I assume I need to abstain from this vote, sir?
I think typically the appointee does abstain. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention. Allen. Madam Clerk?
23-170 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Tourism Reserve Fund with a request to concur of Bernice Gordon Young.
Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention. Gordon Young. Madam Clerk?
23-171 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Civic Center Authority with a request to concur of Timothy Regenbach.
Councilmember Regenbach?
I will be abstaining from this, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Graham, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention. Regenbach. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business, and we do not have anything outlined.
Not that I know of.
Okay. Then we'll go on to new business.
Okay. I'm going to lead off here with new business first by welcoming back Mr. J.J. Bullock of the Peoria Journal Star. J.J. left us for a while and I think moved to a bigger city, but he came back, loves Peoria, and is making front-page news stories these days. So welcome back, J.J. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Charter Oak Principal Kathleen Lopez Rodriguez on receiving the distinguished Golden Apple Award for Excellence in Leadership. She was selected out of 130 nominees statewide. So congratulations, Principal Rodriguez. And then lastly, I'd like to just announce that press releases will go out throughout the city about our strategic planning kickoff, which will take place on June 1st and 2nd at the Peoria Civic Center. We're inviting the public to be part of our planning process. And already, we have over 200 committed attendees, including many city staff, but many from the the stakeholders from our community. So we just encourage everyone to get involved in the process. Any other new business? Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and I believe we have four citizen cards that were presented.
Okay. First, we have Cassie. Luekezi? Luekezi, all right. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you, City Council. That is the bane of my existence. So good evening, everyone. My name is Cassie Luekezi, she/her pronouns. I am coming to you this evening as the president of Peoria Proud. The Peoria Proud has been around for about 10 years now, and we are a local organization, LGBTQ organization, who is dedicated to education, advocacy, and social outreach in the greater Peoria area in central Illinois. I am representing both the board, as well as myself this evening, and many of our other partners throughout the community that want to emphasize to you, the city council, and leadership that hate has no place in Peoria, in central Illinois, or in our state. We want you to bring attention to you all that Governor of Florida, Ron DeSantis, will be in Peoria on Friday, May 12th, the evening before Bradley University's graduation and Mother's Day weekend, to attend as a guest speaker and keynote for the Lincoln Day Dinner at the Peoria Civic Center, held by the Peoria County Republicans and Tazewell County Republican Parties. This particular guest has raised egregious concerns amongst minority groups across the state, including youth, people of color, indigenous peoples, and those people identifying as LGBTQ plus. Governor DeSantis has created policies that remove protections and rights from minority groups and individuals living at the poverty line within the state of Florida. And we come this evening to present to you not about politics, but about people. Because we are people and human rights need, and we are humans and we need rights and protections. So this is not about politics. This is about people. There will be gatherings throughout Peoria, downtown Peoria, on Friday, the 12th, to bring nonviolent individuals and groups together to promote love, inclusivity, and civic engagement. We are fortunate enough to live in the state of Illinois, where there are laws in place to protect all of the citizens who choose to call this state home. It is not the case in surrounding states like Indiana, Iowa, and Missouri, and even communities outside of Peoria, where those who do live in fear and fight for their basic rights and for their safeties. We believe that strategic organization and advocacy with partners throughout the community can challenge the status quo and the bad policies that harm others. We are grateful for our partners throughout the community, many who were here this evening and are here this evening, for their collaboration and support to show that hate has no place in Peoria or in the state of Illinois. And we do not welcome those who do not recognize the rights and diversity of others. We hope to see you on Friday outside of the Civic Center or at Federal Plaza for our celebration of love, diversity, and inclusion. Thank you.
Next, we have Ren Parker.
Ren is not going to join us. Can I just give the stage a little bit longer?
Okay, all right. We have Noah Palm. We have Noah Palm.
Hello, Madam Mayor, uh, City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I am a representative of Peoria CPUSA, and I'm here tonight to talk about a local fundraiser, our organization, uh, put on for, to celebrate local working-class heroes for May Day. Um, I apologize, I am going to read a statement, so it's not going to be very engaging, but I have a lot to say and I want to be precise. Um, so, uh, in the packet that I handed out to everybody, um, it goes into a lot more information, but for those of you who don't know, May Day, which is on May 1st, is the original Labor Day in the United States that started in eighteen eighty-nine after the Haymarket Affair. On May 1st, eighteen eighty-six, hundreds of thousands of workers across the country went on a general strike to demand an eight-hour day. The workers struggled for several days and until, um, on May 3rd, police shot six workers in the back, killing at least one of them. In response, workers organized a peaceful rally at Haymarket Square to condemn what had happened the night before. Just as the rally was wrapping up, two hundred officers charged the square. As they escalated an ending peaceful rally, a fight broke out between the cops and the crowd. During the commotion, a stick of dynamite was hurled towards the police. Immediately afterwards, the police opened fire, killing at least four and injuring more. Within five minutes, Haymarket Square was empty besides the dead, the wounded, and the bloodthirsty police. No one knew who threw the stick of dynamite, but the state went out to make an example of the organizers of the strike. Immediately afterwards, department, police departments throughout the country went on a crackdown campaign of all labor movements, but especially in Chicago, where they went for a manhunt for those responsible for the rally. It was a clear message to the working class, obey your corporate masters or suffer the repression of the state. After a kangaroo court, eight working-class organizers were charged with conspiracy with no evidence that any of them had thrown the dynamite, and only two of them were present that day at Haymarket Square. Four of the eight were marched to the gallows. The Haymarket Martyrs immediately became working-class heroes and reintegrated the labor movement across the country and the world. In eighteen eighty-nine, the Second International declared, uh, May 1st be recognized as International Workers' Day. In eighteen ninety-four, how, or ninety-four, however, President Grover Cleveland recognized Labor Day to be the first week in September in order to draw attention away from the Haymarket Affair. International Workers' Day is still celebrated in over eighty countries except for the one that it originated in. Despite not being officially recognized in the United States, many unions and immigrant groups still celebrate May Day as a working-class holiday. In celebration of this holiday this year, members of Peoria CPUSA and other working-class community members put on a fundraiser to honor some of our own local class, or local working-class heroes. We were able to raise enough funds to purchase two pages in the People's World May Day program book. Our first page was to honor Peoria's own Mark Clark. A Black Panther leader and working-class hero, Clark championed the ideas of a better world right here in our city until his death at the age of twenty-two. He organized a free breakfast program and fought against systematic racism that plagued Peoria and still plagues Peoria. Uh, Peoria's, uh, Peoria branch NAACP President Marvin Hightower, um, said that he is one of the unsung heroes of the movement, and he stood for what he believed and was murdered for that belief. On December 4th, nineteen sixty-nine, police raided an apartment on Chicago South Side that housed members of the Black Panther Party. In a one-sided shootout, the police murdered Mark Clark and Fred Hampton and injured four other Black Panthers. This assassination was an attempt to stop a Messiah from leading the Black members of the working class to liberation from the oppressions, the oppressive system of racism and capitalism. What they didn't realize was that the working class doesn't need a Messiah. Working people have continued to fight against injustice everywhere in this country, and just like Mark Clark, people are doing it right here in Peoria. This leads us to our second page, which was to honor our local library workers who are currently struggling for a fair contract. These workers in Ask Me Local 3464 are modern examples of working-class heroes. With my work as a volunteer journalist with People's World, I have the opportunity of sitting down with many rank-and-file union workers to discuss their working conditions and grievances. I've also had the pleasure of using, uh, the Peoria Public Libraries at least twice a month, um, and I know from experience that these workers offer some of the best care to their patrons. I don't know of any other field where the workers love doing their job more than these workers at the libraries. That's why it's sad to see that our city, as one worker put it, is exploiting that love to pay them less. So not only am I here in celebration of May Day, but I'm also here in solidarity with my working-class siblings. An attack on a lib- on our library workers, which is what these poverty wages represent, is also an attack on me and every other worker in this city. What kind of an example is the city setting to the employers by allowing poverty wages in six-day work weeks to exist within our public-owned libraries? Furthermore, just last month, we celebrated how important libraries were to our democracy. These programs and services that make the library an institution of our democracies are produced by the hands of these workers. Therefore, this is not-
Thank you, Mr. Palm.
...just an attack on our working class, this is an attack on democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have a familiar face, uh, Mr. Ross Black.
Madam Mayor, counsel, uh, madam clerk, madam manager? It's, uh, good to be back in this space. I really mean that. Uh, for the last year and a half, I've had the privilege of being on the board of the East Bluff Community Center, and on behalf of the board and the staff, I would just like to thank all of you for your positive vote this, uh, this evening on the CDBG Public Service Grant. Um, we do really appreciate it. If you have not had an opportunity, um, to visit the community center and to see what wonderful programs and services and partnerships exist under that roof, please feel free to stop by anytime because, uh, because of your generosity, that roof will continue to be there for far longer than it would have if you had not voted yes. So thank you.
You're welcome. That concludes our comments. Madam, Madam Clerk?
We are on to executive session.
I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene and close session immediately following adjournment of the city council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act Five ILCS 120 slash two C 11 to discuss pending litigation and pursuant to the Open Meetings Act Five ILCS 120 slash two C 21 for approval by the body of closed session minutes. Uh, moved by councilmember Bernice Gordon Young, seconded by councilmember, uh, Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service.